Good evening. Today is Monday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And we all be sent to the pleasure.
Can I have a motion to approve the meeting? All in favor? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second. Motion to move the superintendent's number six above number two of audience comments.
Second. All in favor? So we are going to move on number six superintendent's report to above number two of audience comments.
Thank you, President. Good evening, board and community members. We are in the midst of our summer season, which is a very busy season, so I wanted to make sure I took my update. First, to get it out of the way, because it does address some of the items on our agenda and also some of the busy work that are just doing. So. So our, as I've said before, our administrators, staff, all employees are busy getting ready for their most important day of the year, which is when we welcome our students back, which will be September second, which is the first day of school. You're excited for that?
Yes.
Yes. We are already planning for the most exciting day of the year. That will be a half day for our K through five students and a full day for our students in grades six through twelve. Please be on the lookout for communication from your building with more information. In anticipation of that, our portal day where we open up information that is relevant to the opening of school will be August twenty-second for our K through eight students, which they will receive their teacher assignments and schedules. The Hendrick Hudson High School student schedules will be released on August fifteenth. We do have some required information that when you do access your intimate campus parent portal that will pop up that you'll have to review and check to sign off to as part of our mandated disclosure information that's required each year. At that time as well, all transportation information will be available on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. As we continue to develop routes, transportation over the summer is dynamic. Any new enrollment may possibly change the routes that we provide and how we structure those routes. So we want to make sure that we have information out enough time to parents, but also so that they're accurate information and then we can always schedule those routes. So please wait until a quarter day to try to access that information, just like our schools that need to be cleaned, maintained. So does so our electronic systems, particularly our student database that must be updated all over. So if you attempt to access it, it may not be available during the summer months. So just be aware of that. And also, when it is available in the portal, please review your transportation information closely as bus numbers and pickup locations change most years. And speaking of transportation, this is the time of year that we are again finalizing our transportation routes. We're taking all the data that we receive from enrollments, possible moves in the district. If you think of even every home sale that possibly has children associated with that, who get to join our family and our community, that may impact transportation routes. So I always like to provide context of the summer months about how public schools approach transportation-related matters. And it really is grounded in New York State Educational Law and Commission of Regulations. Many people feel that transportation decisions, while operationally, such as routes and buses and transition to electronic buses, that's mandated by the state now, those items are handled at the district level, but they are guided by clear laws and regulations. So I wanted to make sure that that we review those, because those rules are designed to balance access equity and fiscal responsibility of the school district. And while students transported attend non-public schools, districts are still bound by public school regulations since the transportation of that is publicly funded. So transportation to a non-public school by public school resources is mandated up to a distance of fifteen miles, measured along the nearest available public route from the student's residence to the school. And the statutes are clear. The fifteen mile limit is measured from the student's home to the non-public school, not from the school to the district boundary. Parents must submit a written transportation request by April first of the preceding year or the thirty days of moving into this, the district. The timely submission of this request helps the district manage costs, establish safe routes, feasible routes, and help ensure that the buses can accommodate that. I want to provide clarification of that April first deadline. When that form is due, requesting transportation is not an approval of a request stating that the district will be able to transport a child. The district must, as I mentioned earlier, build routes, which occurs over the summer prior to determine transportation eligibility or eligibility. The form that is due on April first is required notification by the parents to the district, notifying the district that if they're eligible by law, that family would like to have their child transported. School districts do not have the authority to create their own eligibility rules or override state laws and regulations regarding transportation eligibility. Our transportation department has been and will continue to be in touch with state officials and our legal team when necessary with reviewing situations as they arise. And any local policy that is developed must align with education law three, six, three, five and related regulations. And every year we do ask our attorneys to review our policies, and they have recently reviewed our transportation policy and have said that it is compliant with state law. Districts are not required to continue providing transportation that was provided in previous years that may fall outside of legal parameters, even if it has occurred in previous years. As transportation eligibility depends strictly on statutory requirements and past practice does not create an ongoing entitlement because it was incorrect. This ensures that districts comply fairly and consistently with legal mandates. Now, there are two ways that districts may provide transportation to students to non-public schools beyond that fifteen mile statutory limit. Districts may, with voter approval, provide transportation if it is approved by a public vote. And this normally appears as an annual proposition or a one-time proposition in the annual budget or election vote. And if adopted, or I'm sorry, if approved, that proposition must be applied equally and similarly situated to all students. So if the board proposes and the community votes on and adopts a fifty mile radius, every student wishing to be transported within that fifty mile radius must be a candidate. The second way that a district may provide transportation to students in non-public schools beyond the fifteen mile statutory limit is if one or more students live within the fifteen miles of the non-public school to be attended. The district can designate one or more public schools as a centralized pickup point and provide transportation for students who live beyond the fifteen miles from the non-public school to one of these centralized pickup points and the non-public school. The statutes require that these are centralized pickup points, and it's not a preference of the district. They must be centralized. We are not required as a district to provide transportation to and from a student's home to that centralized pickup point. In reviewing state statutes, New York State requires that funds used for transportation are used efficiently and predictably, which is why there are uniform rules that all districts must follow about who is eligible, how far a district must transport, and how those services are requested. Parents are free to choose non-public schools for their children, and the state limits public funding for services like transportation to avoid unfairly shipping additional burgers to public schools or taxpayers. The law recognizes non-public students as part of the broader educational ecosystem, but doesn't fully equate private enrollment with public obligation. If there are no limits, the district might be obligated to bus a student thirty miles away or longer, potentially creating financial and logistical considerations. Fifteen mile rule, if you review state statutes, as the state says, and other regulations help establish consistency so that transportation decisions are based on law, not personal preference, past or past practice. In short, transportation rules that we must follow from the state are about fairness, sustainability, and stewardship of resources. The goal is to support families who choose non-public schools while ensuring public schools can provide services in a way that is legally consistent, operationally practical, and statistically responsible. Shifting to another item that is on our agenda this evening, our policy five, six, nine, five, student use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. So this evening will mark the second reading and contentional adoption of that policy, which will establish expectations for student use of personal digital devices during instructional hours. The policy is designed to support both student learning and well-being while complying with a new law enacted by the New York State Legislature. This is not a regulation enacted by the New York State Education Department. This is state law. The policy was developed, that is presented this evening, was developed through a collaborative process that included input from the district shared decision-making committee, model policies for regional partners, a comprehensive legal review, and guidance from the New York State School Works Association. It also incorporates feedback gathered from students, staff, families, and community members via tools such as thought exchange. As this is a newly enacted law, I anticipate future adjustments to the policy. I've said this before, a policy that we may adopt this evening may not be, probably should not be, the policy that is enacted on November first. We anticipate that there's a lot to learn as we enact this, and the language is also written in a broad enough manner that we don't have to make consistent changes, but we anticipate that. Because as we guessed, the state has made discreet minor hints about where they are now interpreting the law. Since our last meeting, the state has released additional information, including a memorandum from the New York State Education Department, indicating that the district will be eligible for approximately eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars once we have posted an adopted policy that is compliant with the statute. We are exploring possible uses of these funds, including storage solutions, software to meet reporting requirements, and possible staff funding for device collection and return if a device happens to be confiscated. We did take and participate in a regional poll of superintendents, and that regional poll shows that most school districts, like Hendrick Hudson, plans to require students to store devices in lockers without investing in additional storage systems. Additionally, New York State recently, and I will add discreetly, updated its guidance website in clarifying, now this is not the statute, this is a policy, this is a clarification of their guidance, clarifying that backpacks are not acceptable storage option. The New York State also says that policies must prohibit continuous or unsupervised student access to devices during the school day. Lockers may be used, and this again is New York State guidance that was just recently, and again, there is no fanfare or notice provided of this, your research on this. Lockers may be used, but only if the policy clearly prevents unsanctioned use of the device. I do believe that our policy as drafted for your review and consideration tonight aligns with this new interpretation from the state. There were two questions raised during our first reading of this policy that I'd leave merit to follow-up. The question was, will students be able to use their devices if being transported to buses? And my review of the regulation and statute shows that there is no prohibition of this on buses to buses. As I said, once they arrive at buses, buses will have to have a similar policy in place, as the statute discovered buses. And I, and our policy as presented to the Board of Education tonight for consideration does not have a restriction on school buses in the policy. A question also arose about will MP three players that are not connected to the internet be part of this ban, part of this ban, excuse me? And the way the statute is written is that non-internet-connected devices like MP three players can't connect to the internet, are not covered under law or those policies as written. However, what we can attest, if a staff member doesn't ask you to remove something, you should most likely comply with that. So that is the difference. So as I said before, our administrative team will be meeting in late August to review the final policy as adopted and develop consistent implementation procedures, and then each school will communicate the specifics about anything that is unique to those school or those grade bands through mailings and orientation sessions as appropriate. Final topic tonight, so we talked about transportation, phones, and that food. So as mentioned earlier, in the twenty-five, twenty-six New York State budget, funding has been provided to make school meals universally free for students. In response, we at Hendrick Hudson will transition our Hendrick Hudson High School into that national school lunch program beginning this fall, joining our K through eight schools who already participate in that program. This shift ensures that all students, grades K through twelve, receive free breakfast and lunch each day. Just a few key points about that transition and the participation of Hendrick Hudson High School. No applications will be required for students to receive free meals. Meals must meet, that we serve must meet federal nutritional standards, including required components such as fruits, vegetables, grains, proteins, and milk. Students must be offered all components, although they are not required to consume each of those components. Students can still bring food from home or purchase all-of-car items, provided that those items that are offered all-of-car meet program guidelines. Food brought from home does not have any program guidelines, so there will be nobody checking bag lunches to make sure that it meets those guidelines. Some modifications will be needed to be made to our menus to qualify us for that program. Though we do know that popular items will remain, such as communes, forehead to whole cuts, with some adjustments, specifically no salami, doesn't need sodium particles, and whole grain versions of similar items. Now, I recognize that any change can raise questions, and I do know that the district a few years ago, twenty fourteen, if I heard, twenty fourteen, the district explored going into the program, and at that time, what we saw was that most food service providers were not prepared to implement with a wider range of wide variables or selections within their menus at that time, so some of the food may not have been appealing to the students that may have been manning customers. It has been a few years, and we have seen trends in the industry indicate that the food has caught up to some of the tastes or the preferences while remaining compliant with new guidelines. So we're confident, having spoken with our food service director, our food service consultant, that students will continue to enjoy high-quality meals under this new model. This does. This transition does, as well as with updated guidance from New York State and our food service consultant. We have been informed that we do need to open our food service contract for rebidding, and it is recommended that the supervisory position that we currently have is part of that, is included in the contract with this food service provider. So there's a lot of changes that could be coming forward. So as you know, we do want to make sure people are informed that they have some input. So as we embark on this change and to ensure transparency and continue to gather feedback, the district is facilitating several engagement opportunities. We had one last week right in this very room where we opened up, we invited the community to come in and ask questions. We had one attendee, but I think some pretty good information was shared at that timeframe. We will have a student-specific town hall for all of Hendrick Hudson High School students on Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, four fifteen to five P M. in the Hendrick Hudson High School cafeteria right here. We will also have a virtual option available. We will be reconvening the district wellness committee. We will also be meeting specifically with the student government representatives after we do have that student town hall so that students can reach out to their student government representatives if they have any concerns. We meet Ms. Collins, our new Hendrick Hudson High School principal, and this Lisa Alvis, will meet with the student government on August twenty-first. And then we will conduct a community-wide thought exchange that will stay open as we open up the school to gather input, and I will engage in a monthly practice of having a bunch of students. With a specific, while I've done that in the past, I will focus this year on the high school to support open dialogue as long as the food is not thrown at me. To ensure that I can have a firsthand knowledge of the student experiences. And I truly do appreciate the community's understanding as we move through a number of these complex but meaningful shifts as this transition in particular reflects our shared commitment to ensure that all students are prepared to learn with a healthy meal option. At this time, all the questions that were posed at last meeting were answered, and I played on the cell phone.
That brings us to the what? That brings us to the audience comments on non-agenda items. Carmen, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Ann Lloy. Hello, everyone. I'm a lady of the evening, but for those who don't have Ann Lloy, working on various PTs in the district, but today I'm here actually representing a group of students from Kennedy Catholic. And I just wanted to share some thoughts on our behalf, and thank you for listening. So on Friday has been, you know, we received a notification on Friday afternoon, the busing would no longer be available for Kennedy for this year. You know, based on our collective memory, this busing has been provided for at least the past seventeen years without interruption. So although I very clearly heard the directive, Mr. Tronley, I think there was no expectation this year and no sort of warning that potentially this would be the year that that policy would change. And given that it's six weeks before the start of school, as you might imagine, this is a tad disruptive for many of us. And a lot of our, we're very concerned that we may not be able to send our kids to Kennedy this year. It is a significant drive, and as tough as the morning is, that three fifteen pickup or that three thirty pickup is almost impossible. I myself work at the World Trade Center, so I'm not making it to Kennedy at three o'clock in the afternoon. So we just wanted to share some general sort of thoughts and concerns, and hopefully you can hear and leave it some thought. So first and foremost, I think that one of the most disruptive sort of conversations that have come up in the past couple of days is the calculation of this fifteen miles. So for me, when we started at Kennedy, obviously busing was going to be a critical consideration factor. I know that I'm in fifteen miles, but when I look at Google Maps, at Apple Maps today, because of the Baptist Church Road construction, it is rerouting, and I cannot certainly navigate that to sort of renew a map that says that I actually achieved the fifteen miles. So I think I just want to, first of all, make sure that when we're calculating this mileage, that we're counting for the fact that this is a temporary close that hopefully will be opened up in the very next few months and should not be considered as part of the route consideration. Secondly, we have at least two, if not three, parents coming on the folks that actually, when you do run through those app maps, actually do fall within the fifteen mile. We have one family that has three out of four routes that actually fall beneath the fifteen mile limit, and then we have at least one other family that is falling within that fifteen mile limit. So I think there also needs to be a discussion around what is the source of truth? And how is this mileage being calculated so that we can have a conversation around that, make sure that we understand? And I encourage us to make sure that incoming parents understand how that is managed, because of course, being able to have your child transported to Kennedy is a key consideration factor for them, for that decision as a family. And then it just falls in from a student perspective. I mean, we are now looking at a number of children who may not be able, who may have to transfer back to Hendrick Hudson. How do we make sure that their, the course of their education is not interrupted, that they can receive BAP classes? I already know they can't receive Latin, that if they're in honors classes, that they can be accommodated, because this has a profound impact. But Ava's coming into junior year. That is pretty important for her to have her education potentially disrupted. So I think that that's just a consideration to sort of how do we address that on behalf of these kids. And, you know, I would say that we, sorry, hold on a second. I know one of the solutions, and by the way, I just want to say that I've been speaking with Lisa Salmon. She has been incredible. She's been such a great partner in trying to sort her own kind of solution for this. So I just need to acknowledge her before she's there for us. So thank you for that, Lisa. But I think one of the solutions that was put forth as an example was Lakeland, joining the last out of Lakeland. And while I very much appreciate that the district has taken the time to try and solve for us, you know, number one, Lakeland was only made aware of this consideration two weeks ago when we spoke to them. Number two, they want everyone picked up at three fifteen, and some of us are thirteen, fourteen miles away from from that school, so it's almost the equivalent of actually traveling to Kennedy for us. And our students are seemingly not allowed to enter that building. So if they cannot be picked up by three fifteen or whenever the bus stops them off, then they're sitting there outside with no security, no protection. And as we all know, they're on the sidewalks anywhere up here, so it's not reasonable to expect them to walk more than four hundred, walk in fourteen miles to that. Okay, so they just walk home from Kennedy. So I just. My ultimate request is, can we just please take a moment to potentially pause this decision so that we can work through what is seemingly data discrepancies, number one? And also make sure that these children, who by the way are also students within the Hendrick Hudson district, their educational progress is not interrupted by this change. And so with six weeks before school's end, I mean, this is by way of one of the group of parents who will absolutely work to come to a joint solution. This board has worked so diligently to try and restore some financial stability to this district, which I personally very much appreciate. So I think it's just taking a moment to figure out where is there a solution for us that does not put these kids at risk, both physically, their educational progress, and so forth, with such a short notification period. The one other point I will make is that not even understanding is, there was one single student that the transportation department believed was eligible for busing, and that student was a senior last year. It would have been helpful if we were notified of that when the board percent out in February to say, listen, this is the first time in however many years where there is a risk that we do not have a child who is entering the district that qualifies, that we may have to revisit the bus, the bus allowance that we provide to Kennedy. Then we would have had a very different conversation, we would have had time to solve for this. And I think moving forward, if we can sort of build that sort of discourse with Kennedy so that we can come together and have a little bit of warning, it would be really helpful for everyone involved, presuming we can find a solution that works for all. So thank you all. I appreciate the time and.
Just want to take one moment, and please know that when I do respond, it's not typical to respond, because it's a public comment, we want to hear your comment. But I do want to just thank you for your comment. Please make sure that if you have future comments, we do enjoy recognizing the contributions of our staff, but it is a, it is a policy that we don't mention staff members in public comment, good or bad, and it's okay. That's why we're just confirming this. And please know that if I do respond, it's not to try to include a point or not, it's just to simply provide context. Obviously, everybody is entitled to hear the comment, but I also want to make sure that there is context provided. So here's what I can commit to in terms of the data discrepancy. The fifteen mile limit is a hard and fast rule through New York State. We all know that in the age of technology and constant road construction, that there could be discrepancies. I will commit to you that I will, cover yours, Mr. Malini, I will drive with transportation when appropriate. If concerned, parents have an idea that their route may not be calculated correctly according to whatever Google Maps. If you could please let Ms. Koch know the address and your name, I will, I will be driving that to look for myself specifically from that distance to Kennedy. On that as well, there was a mention that this was the first that it was made aware of. We can always do a better job communicating. I think that's across the board. If anybody can do a better job communicating. I would say that I have never had a conversation with Kennedy Catholic. They have never reached out to me as well. So I think there's an opportunity there, because there is a statute that says it has to be a partnership between the public school and the non-public school that should both make sure that they are looking out for the interests. Because I will say this, and I'm a firm believer in this, any student that lives inside Hendrick Hudson School District has the potential to be our student at any point in time, circumstances, step change. So in terms of transitioning back in as an example, we will make sure that any student who may have to transfer back in, regardless of if they're in a public school, I'm sorry, in another public school, in an impeding school, in a religious school, they will transfer in and their transcripts will be reviewed. It will be with a guidance counselor, a school counselor, to make sure that they're placed correctly. And in addition, we will make sure that that they, that they're connecting to that council. In terms of also being aware of the fact that this could change every year, on our forms, we do clearly state, because we want parents to be aware, the forms that are filled out that are due on April first always say that transportation can even change during the middle of the year. So we want to make sure that people are aware of that in any terms, because there could be a situation that requires us to revisit that, and we by law or statute must comply with that law or statute. And if we are engaged in that practice, just like I'm sure many people are in their own jobs, if they know something is in error, they have to correct it at that time. We also will. We also, in terms of notifying Lakeland, we have an inter-n municipality agreement, a shared service agreement with Lakeland. We often, with school districts, are in contact with them in short notice, because they may have a requirement that they may need assistance with. So we are used to these short notices about when, when we may need to activate that. So, but I can commit to this. We always will try to do better to communicate. I will, if possible and appropriate, will drive the routes myself. So please, if you do feel that your route is not being, if your distance is not being calculated accurately, please give your name and address to Ms. Koch. I promise I won't come into your driveway, but I will go from your driveway and go there. So Ms. Koch is right there. So thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Father Valen Malaki.
Good evening. My name is Father Mark Valencourt. I am the president of John F. Kennedy Catholic Paritary School in Somers, New York. And I'm here on the behest of my families, who are here because of the disruption of their transportation for school. And I'd like to make a few comments, but before I do that, I do have a prepared statement from the Archdiocese of New York, which I would like to share with you at this time. On behalf of the superintendent of Schools Office of the Archdiocese of New York, we are disappointed in the district's decision to deny bus transportation to these students. We are committed to partnering with Kennedy Catholic and the school district. We are committed to partnering with Kennedy Catholic and the school district to come to a mutually agreeable resolution, ensuring these students and taxpaying families receive their equitable share of these services. The late notice to these families who made their decision to attend Kennedy in part based on the transportation options previously available now places a significant obstacle in the way of their ability to continue their education at our school. We would respectfully ask that this decision be reconsidered in the interest of fairness to the students and families that are now impacted. This is from the superintendent of government programs to services Catholic schools of the Archdiocese of New York. So I did reach out to them. I would like to now add my own comments because this is important. I liked the term partnership. I have been at Kennedy Catholic for seventeen years. I am now starting my eighteenth. I have been in a partnership with seventeen school districts that bus directly to our school. And Head Hood, Henderson, has been the continuous district that has brought school students to our school. I value that partnership. I reach out to you today that we can find some equitable solution to continue that partnership. On behalf of my, my families, who have put down a lot of money. They have put down money for tuition deposits. They have invested in the four-year program at our school. And a number of the people here tonight are incoming freshmen who I vetted, who are an important part of our future. And I'm always trying to provide for the future of our school. Now, our school, I believe their partnership with your district is important. Why is that? Well, if I'm a family moving into this area, Montrose or right around here, to know that I have access to a private school, Catholic school, and that the transportation is easily accessible to me, well, that's enticement to come to this area. So I think it's in your vested interest to really want to continue that partnership. I have, as I said, been the head of the school for seventeen years. I have the stove diplomas on a great number of families and students who have come from this area with pride. They are excellent students, excellent members of our community, and I feel that we are part of their educational orbit. I do understand statutes, laws, and interpretation thereof. And I'm not here tonight to challenge them. But I am here to make an appeal on fundamental fairness for my families to be told. And I had known for one, and I'll be quite honest with you, to have a seventeen year, seventeen year relationship with this district. I was mindset to hear that all of a sudden, a great number, significant number of my families would be losing that transportation. And so I feel fundamental fairness that we can review the facts, look at, obviously, what can be done and take into consideration that partnership. To really disenfranchise my families, essentially, they is a trauma thing. And certainly can be very disappointing. For I heard I have a number of juniors here tonight, they're getting ready to apply to colleges. They want to have their transcript clean, that they showed four years at the same school and with pride have done great academic success. That's important. So the decision tonight can affect adversely some of the students who are here before you. And I know you don't want to do that. I know as a board, you're invested in the education of young people and their success, as I have been. And so I'm looking for an amicable agreement, some type of reconsideration, an understanding that partnership with our school is a good one. And if we can find some way to continue it, I would ask really for the relief of my families, for the good of my school and for your district if we could find some type of common group. Thank you.
I think you guys were coming to speak today. So that moves us on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda?
Can I just say if anybody wants to walk from the. I'm sure your name is.
Oh, you have it, so I shouldn't think. Okay. I am here to sort of.
And just to be clear, I need to wait after our extra.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. But does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to pull the three point four resolution to authorize agreement with Sunday to remove and reinforce the MMS system.
Second, all in favor? Does anybody have anything else that would like to pull on the agenda, the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve their. For the resolution to authorize agreement with the sunny to remove and reinforce the MMS solar system, the motion. All in favor? And so that brings us to a discussion on the resolution to authorize agreement with the sunny to remove and reinforce the MMS solar system. Would like to bring up Mr. Malini. Oops, sorry.
Just wanted to make sure that the board, this was a late addition to our agenda. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Mr. Malini is here to clean up any incorrect context that I find. But this is a resolution to engage with a company to, as roof repairs are going on, to remove the solar panels that are existing on the roof. And then replace them once the roof repairs are done. So everybody knows with the capital construction project, there's a lot of externalities that occur. This will give us the opportunity to enter into an agreement with a provider or a contractor, should we choose to do that this year. And we have not, we have not decided whether or not that will occur this year, but we just wanted to in a way to keep the project moving along, if we needed to do that, have the board's authorization for that.
I'll ask a question. Is it going to incur any additional costs to re-put them back on?
Yes. So the cost for the solar companies, removing, they solicited this, they put one out for pricing. And it came back and was twenty fifty thousand dollars.
Is that two hundred and fifty thousand? Well, that was us to not be able to do something else, or was that like part of the?
Part of the bond. We already had a contingency in the bond to remove and replace the solar panels. I think up to like three hundred something thousand dollars. So this two hundred fifty would cover it. The other cost that would be inside of that would be cost revenue from having a solar system in place. So everything that they're not providing, they took an estimate as to how long that system is going to be out for the roof repairs and replacement. And there's also a charge for that involved in the neighborhood of eighty nine dollars, something like that. It's only a few dollars.
Are we, this is a little bit in the weeds, but I think this, we've had some issues with blue mountain roof. Are we replacing, fixing, blue mountain roof? That's, is that the reason we may be doing this?
The whole mountain roof is going to be on the original building in its entirety, except for the two cuphouses and the gymnasium will be removed and replaced. And that's where the bulk of the problems that we have with the past. So all of that's going to be a new roofing system and we're going to take everything all down right to the deck, including the asbestos lifting upstairs. So moving forward, we'll have to deal with asbestos, we won't have to deal with anything. And this roof has a long warranty.
Now is a ready party.
Yes, currently.
Thank you, Ms. Malini, for the context.
Does anybody have any other question? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda item three point four, resolution to authorize agreement with sunny to remove and reinforce the MMS. So a resolution to approve, resolution to authorize a agreement with sunny to remove and reinforce the MMS. All in favor? Next, we move on to our latest comments on agenda items. Do we have any speakers? Can you do that? Okay, so that brings us to, we skip over number six because we did that previously. To number seven, for comments in business, anybody have anything they want to share? Right? That would bring us to our policy reading. So tonight we have our second reading of policy five, six, nine, five, student use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. Policy five, six, nine, five, student use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. The Board of Education is committed to write a second. All in favor? So that relates to our discussion. Anybody have any further questions or comments since our last meeting?
I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting. Were there any discussions? Was there any discussion around making changes or information that had to come back or anything?
Sure. Primarily, there are two questions that we couldn't answer in that discussion, I think, with fidelity were because they were unknown. And that was the chem students using on the post's bus, which the way I interpret both the regulation and our policy of draft is yes.
As well as our best.
We've got the bus two buses or the bus, the bus is two school, yes. And because I particularly looked at the definition of school day and school rounds. And the bus was not included on the school rounds. And then the question regarding non-internet connected MP three players. So I'm sure that it's all money. There's a resurgence and we're talking about this today with our legal counsel, that the yellow soda walk-ins. You might see them back on the market now. We'll make our way back. So we sport. So yes, sorry, those not internet connected devices would be allowable according to the statute and our policy has written.
Oh, earlier in your update, you mentioned that the lockers sounded iffy because the students don't have access to their lockers throughout the school day. But then you say you think we're good with this policy. So how do we, because kids do have access to their lockers during the school day. I'm sure they're going to go, I'm sure they're going to love. That just.
Yeah, so the state updated a website without even, I, I just saw it today as I was cruising in to prepare this meeting. They updated a website which is meant to assist with school districts and inform individuals who are interested in this regulation about how this regulation is deployed. And there was new information that said, from the state's perspective, that backpacks are not considered a way of securing them and that lockers can be used as long as they are explicitly used for the purpose of not allowing unauthorized access. I think that we all know that our, our staff and our faculty does a fantastic job of monitoring student behavior to not do things. And while we're not the gotcha game, we're in the game of helping students learn how to behave, certain expectations. For instance, we have a no tobacco policy and there are instances where that policy is violated, but we address it. We, we don't have searches of students to make sure that they are not walking in the building. We assume that they are doing the right thing. We want to catch them doing the right thing and use teachable moments to promote when a report is chosen is made. I do think the way that the, our policy is written is we are expressing that we do not expect students to use them during the school day. That's clearly expressed in our policy, but we can store them in their lockers. And again, that was chosen because things such as a central location that may not be their lockers may impede with the logistical and operational flow of students getting to classes, into the classrooms where they want, where we expect them to be learning and we don't want to bottleneck to lay that. And that we will also say that in an emergency, I can authorize the use of those phones for whatever reason. If I deem it an emergency, we want to make sure that they are able to access them in that instance. So we're again in uncharted waters, but I think we're safe in terms of the way that we are applying our policy.
Something that I hear often in the community, and I'm not challenging this, I actually really appreciate this policy. Parents have a false sense of security around children having cell phones in our buildings. As a superintendent, what would you say to the community about the need for a child to have a phone on their person while in school?
So I, I can certainly, as a parent, I can certainly understand that I want to be able to contact my child in the event of a family emergency, in the event of something occurring at school. So I think those are the, I like to deal in extremes, just try to talk about how we approach things. So let's break it apart first time. Let's say I have a family emergency at home. Sick family member, family pet passes away, an event happens at home that is appropriate for me to contact my student or I need to. There is a way that parents can contact students at any time they're within our school buildings. They can call the main office. Our staff will be able to locate the, the child and we will make that arrangement as quickly as possible. That is why we have caring, kind people answering our phones and we have caring, kind educators to make sure our students can get to that phone. The other side is what if something occurs in the school district and I want to get a look at my child? Even within a situation where we allow cell phones, our first response is to protect our students. Most of our emergency response procedures do not have parents coming to the school or contacting the students. Why don't we want students on cell phones in an emergency situation? We anticipate that we will be providing needed directions to the students to respond to that emergency. And we do not want our students on cell phones, even though this bandwidth isn't effective. If there was a fire drill, emergency evacuation, we had the expectation that our students were not on their cell phones during that. So I will do my best if we are in a situation, hopefully not, where we are in an emergency to communicate, to balance our communication to families, to let them know that we are responding to that emergency, but also while giving attention to actually responding to that. In fact, we had a tabletop drill this year, this summer with our administrators and our security consultants to talk about how we specifically will communicate out in an emergency situation. We talked about that. So we, we tabletoped it. I hope that answers.
Yeah, totally. Thank you.
Are we going to use, like, so are we still all going to use backpacks? Cause like any, you want to stick it in the locker. So I think we put our phone in our locker and then all of our books and like everything that's in our bag. So it's like regular, but then we just go to the locker only at the beginning and then.
However, you, you can use a backpack if you like. This policy does not interfere with you being able to use a backpack or how you choose to go to your locker. We just expect the phone stays in your locker.
My main question centers around the BYOD policy and from what I have heard you say. And within the policy, it's no longer, because they're internet-enabled devices, they're no longer allowed unless there's an educational reason for it. So what's the process? What is going to be the process to get your device approved? You know, is that bringing it to the teacher? Is that like ending the teacher's life and giving her a million more? And then my other question, I forget, that tends to happen, is do we have enough Chromebooks? I know, you know, there's sometimes a short supply for all the kids that were bringing their own devices and that need a full market step.
So we, we had expressed before that as in the spring, as we were considering this, this was passed, obviously, after the budget was adopted and we were stated, after our budget was adopted, that we might have to look into, do we have enough devices as we do allow BYOD? We do not have enough devices if everybody, if we, we can, we can get devices if we need to dependent upon the course requirements. Does that make sense?
First, now you don't have any exact numbers. You don't know what to do.
What we anticipate is this would be the school district telling a student, you are in this course, we do not have a device that we can provide you. If you choose to bring your own device, you can. However, we as a school district, if we require it, we have to provide it. So for instance, there are many courses that may require software and hardware requirements. If a student cannot provide that, we do provide that now. So it will be course specific and we will be telling students. So it will be course specific and we would be telling students. Other aspects of exemptions such as maybe a student needs a translation or IP related services. We would be in partnership with the family communicating about those particular exemptions as part of the uh. The CSE process.
What was the timeline date, like our people are getting ready to go back to school September second, right? Or or, I mean, I I would imagine that we're not in the next four weeks or however many weeks are left of summer. Gonna be able to go through all of those assessments. Are you gonna give direction to families like bring your own device if you're usually grand or?
No, no, it would be course specific, so. When you talk about an assessment that we we, for the most part, we've already had our CSE meetings, so we know what accommodations that may require advice.
So on supplies, let's say.
I wouldn't necessarily wait for supply, this this is one of those things where we we have to wait for the policy to be done. Um, if the policy was adopted as is right now, what we would do is we would look at our course requirements, we would touch base with the need on written report. And when you first, we would look to see are there courses where we would allow, it's more about we would allow a student to bring their own device for this course. It would be that, hey, we want you because you have to bring the device for this course, we would allow it for certain.
Wait, I think, I'm confused, I think it's like. Right now, forget like special courses, just basic. Every high school student needs a Chromebook.
We provide a Chromebook for the majority of students.
So currently, we do have the BYOD where we did look at how many students are bringing their own devices, it's about eighty one. Usually juniors and seniors mostly. Um, part of the reason is parents invest in a device to get them ready for college because it's usually the device that they take with them. Um, those eighty one devices, we didn't buy brand new devices to give it to those students. But we do have devices that came back from the seniors, so my tech crew is right now going through. And getting good devices out of that pile. If we need to deploy devices, same thing for the eighth graders where we collected the devices back. We will be going through, they're going through those and see what's good devices out of them so that we can deploy. In September, if we need to deploy eighty devices, so that's what we're doing right now. If it comes back that we need to provide, let's say, six to eighty devices to these students. Will have to make those adjustments at that time because we already ordered everything for next year. Right back in April to get ready for September, so we would have to order those devices. Um, to have them in probably in a month to two months and then. Are they gonna be, are you contacting those eighty families?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna come to school with their, the kids, the high school students are going to come to school with the computers they've been using the last. Hour and a half years this year, last year, they're they're just. Going to, so how are we gonna handle that? I know this is operational.
Yeah, and and I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. Because it will help us identify who we may need to get the device. So here's one of the things that we will work through as a administrative team. Uh, from an operation standpoint, is when you meet on August twenty first, we'll talk to particularly because the need is saying it's primarily juniors and seniors. We will, as part of our outreach, say if you've been bringing your device. Um. Please let us know and we will have your Chromebook ready for you. Um, we can also, we'll have X available probably the first couple of days to make sure they can pass out devices. But if they bring their device and we just have them stored in their locker. Um, to comply with the policy and we will make sure we can get them devices.
And the classroom site P L T W and stuff, we do have a computer part, like a laptop part within the classroom. Those students, yeah, they might have a laptop, but they don't have the necessary software on there, like the autotap costs a lot of money, so. If they do have a project that needs to be finished. Um, the teacher do assign those devices for home to finish their work, same thing for the IT have to be have in the. Art department, like if students are working on a project, yes, they do allow them to take it home and finish the part. Project and send it back.
Clarification on that is that that is not a personally owned device. That would be a district providing device, you know, it's not a Chromebook.
I think my my big point is just like if I'm a parent, I want this clear direction for what I'm supposed to have and get bring. The first day of school as we can provide and knowing that it might change, because this is a living breathing situation.
So that's why we're we're gonna continue to reiterate to be on the lookout for any building specific communications that that may come home and. We will remind our administrators that when we do cohes around our approach, uh that that should be part of orientation uh activities.
And I think we had to also discuss the last ten minutes about just making sure that kids knew where their lockers were. Because that was, yeah, never really seen them anywhere, so like we're gonna try to just try to.
So in the parent portal, um in the in Infinity Campus, every student has a locker assigned to them, it's actually really easily accessible in high school. They just don't use it, so it has to be, it has to be like. It has to be part of culture, so it has to just, we had this conversation the last time I was listening and. For the most part, but we, it's just not part of the high school culture, it just hasn't been for years and years and years, so we have to be mindful of that. Um, I can tell you my. I I know several students, and I'm sure Chloe can attest to this, that they 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 have lockers. They know how to get to their lockers, they know where their lockers are, they just do not.
So I I would, yes, and I would see that this is a motivating factor. I'm going to have to move my locker now because if I choose to bring my cell phone, I'm going to have to store it there. Um, and so I'm gonna have to find it.
Well, part of the issue with the high school, which is different than the middle school, so the middle school, there's time in the morning built in, there's time at the end of the day built in. Lunch, they all eat together, so there's time built into lunch for them to go to their lockers, there's there's. It's more, they have announcements in the morning, they have announcements in the afternoon, the high school is not set up that way. So the kids walk in the door, they go to their locker. They are in classes all day long, some don't have lunch at all and there's only a three minute transfer between classes. And then when the bell rings at two oh seven, the buses roll out at two fifteen, by two fifteen, there's like no time. So. I think we just have to be flexible at least, and I think this is the feedback you're gonna hear from the kids, it's like when you meet with students, they don't have time, so. Like I know there's a lot of concern about kids going to their lockers, like they may do that now to check their homes, right, we know that's possibility. Um. They're really three minutes in between classes, they can barely get, I think, like if, do you have a art class in the basement or a project lead the way class in the basement? To get up to the third floor in the science wing where the English classes, it's it's a trek, so. You know, it's a very different setup than the middle school, yes.
And and I have extreme faith in our students that they can, what I used to term now as a teacher, walk with a purpose. Um, I've often walked through a number of hallways and there is a tempo and a speed. To how students may, some students may walk to class. And we we can definitely talk about how there may be more of a. Of of purposeful walking and movement through the halls to get to class. Um, I I do know that um we would not want students going to their locker to check their cell phones. Uh, exactly, not being in the spirit of the regulation. And also, um. You mentioned one other thing, which I want to make sure that I address. And it's not.
The three minutes, the time before.
Again, all these things that we will discuss as administrative team to be mindful of, um, and. One other thing, really good.
The bus is not leaving without them.
When it comes to me, I will jump back in.
Yeah, I think, I mean, one of the things to notice that if the ban covers instructional and non-instruction. So technically, they shouldn't be going to their lockers to put their phones because then it's supposed to be.
The totality there and totality of the day. Um, that that, and again, this is something that we work with our students to understand and adapt to. And that's again why we believe, or I believe that we may have to read this in the policy.
What, I'm sorry.
I said, sure.
Oh, um, this is crazy, but there's kids bringing ones to elementary school. There's no lockers.
On the policy, it's uh cubbies or even if it's locked.
So we we are, we are, we are, you did write in the policy that is our expectation that students do not bring their cell phones.
Right.
As elementary students, but if they do, we will find cubbies or um lockers as available, oh. Just, I know what I was trying to say, um, one other consideration for the possible funding we may be able to access. Is that we know that students have not, this is just a demonstration, we do try to think of everything. Um, we know the students have not been accessing their lockers. And if lockers don't have locks, we might not have students who have locks. So we may need to utilize some funding to purchase extra locks. But that's that's pretty, right, a supply list, I can, you could argue that that's extra money that our parents now have to spend. And uh this is a requirement. I would, I would say that if we do see a significant need, that might, we might need to utilize some of that state money to provide those locks. So not be an undue burden for for our fans.
My question is like, I am one of the kids who uses a a personal device, sorry. And you were talking about like like clarification or not, I mean, like a Chromebook, so like. If I, like the first day of school, I don't bring a Chromebook, I just have my, like my Mac, which I have. And like all my, all my friends have Mac, so I come in with a Mac. And like I go to AP Lit and I go into AP Lit and I sit there like I didn't attend grade with my Mac. Is that fine or is that like, no, no, you can't?
So we're going to, we're gonna understand that September second is probably gonna look different than September.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would probably have a conversation, do you have a Chromebook? Not, is there a need for you to have a different device that we provide? And if not, we will provide you.
So then we're not like, so we're not a bring your own device? Because that that's the only part I was confused about because it said like you can bring your own device if allowed, but like what like what is allowed? If I bring my own device anyways?
So at this point in time.
Like all my.
At this point in time, we are going to uh have a very narrow scope when you can bring your own device. And then probably explore options when that would be.
So like if it's not like, because I thought it was like, oh, like I can put it in the locker and then for AP Lit, I say, oh, Miss Mars said I could. So I bring it, it's not like that.
Well, what we anticipate is when we meet with our administrative team is we're going to ask the buildings to identify the courses. That would require a device that we do not provide. And then we would communicate out by course for that specific, obviously, there's other exceptions such as other students who have. An accommodation where they have a specific device, that would be a different way to identify students. But as we anticipate it right now, we would ask the building after August twenty first to go back and look at courses. And notify students by courses, so if there's not a notification going out.
Yeah.
Um, a- and again, we'll continue to communicate on this, I would not anticipate that. There would be a need for a BYOD unless we were notified.
I don't know if this is what you meant, but um she may be, she may qualify for one in class, but not the rest of us.
Because I think though, um, there's a need to go put it back.
We're not gonna have you switch out devices.
But.
Basic on the class, the course would qualify you to bring that device during the day.
I think though, the longest meaning that they're gonna have. Is going to hone in on what are the classes that actually need them, like just because they use it before doesn't mean that it's going to now.
Because it wasn't a ban.
Because it's, so now it's, they're gonna come with those rules and let them know, I don't even think right now anyone knows the specifics.
Right, but hypothetically, if she's allowed to, one of her courses is allowing her, and she's allowed the whole day.
Correct.
By by course is the only thing, I'm not, I'm not even trying to push back on it, I'm genuinely. But yeah, no, yeah, so I'm five or four, I have dyslexia, so I get to type.
And you'd be able to be inspired. You would want to.
But okay, so all right, so a kid like, if I, if I, it's not being ruled by the teacher, because if you're saying like, oh. By course, like, okay, so like, all AP Lit kids by course can use a BYOD, that was last year. No, it's.
But I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think any course would 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 say, oh, you can use it because there's always kids who don't. Have their own device, do you know what I mean, like there's always kids who don't, in my classes who don't even, they they don't, they can't, they don't have it, so they. There's, it's not required to have it, so then how would it be? How would I be allowed to use my device just because my mom, whatever, I got it for Christmas and I'm using it for college? But then it's not required, because I can type my S A R one and my friend can type it on his Chromebook. Or like, how would it be grouped by a teacher?
So yes, but and again, let me pull back. We are presenting a policy through the board to approve. The board could tonight say that they do not want the BYOD exemption in there. And then when we meet as an administrative team, we would not have that to sort through. So again, this is a proposed policy, so that is why we have not made any. Decisions or communications home because at any point in time in the policy adoption, the language could change. We have anticipated and recommended, I have recommended, would it be include this in there? So that down the road, when this ban is effect, if there is a need for a BYOD that is in the policy as stated. We can, as administrators, identify a means to enact the BYOD. Um, allowance or exemption down the road, the way the policy is written. It could not be in there. I anticipate us, if we do adopt the policy as written. Once we meet with our administrative team, we would say, are there courses that require our students to have a device different than a Chromebook? If the answer is no. There probably will not be any devices brought, and if you had brought your previous device, we were going to work with you over the first couple of days of school to get you a district open device. If the answer is yes, we will then say, okay, so you're saying that there's a course that requires something different than a Chromebook, which is our district provided by device? What kind of device do we need? And if the answer is something we don't have. Um, or we we feel that we have a couple of these devices and the students have a Mac, let's just say it's a Mac. We want, we can allow students to bring a Mac, then we may do that course exempted. And allow that student to bring that device for the day or do some that course, but obviously, that goes today. The exemptions also as the policy is written, another category is due to an individualized um education.
So I think the administration has to do some, yes, once the policy is adopted.
So we have, um, we wrote last year, we we, I don't remember last year, the prioritization policy. Um, around how our staff communicates with our students, right? Um, one of the things that came out of that was that for the, for sports, we use a approved app app for our students to communicate with their coach. They get notifications on that during this school day, they picture the way it goes. Practice has changed, this has changed, that has changed, that's their only way of knowing. So this is just another operational item, like we enacted that, is there any way to move that app to Chromebook? For the students to, I, how are they gonna communicate with their?
So they just have, especially at the high school model, we have parentsware. Which also is two-way communication, it has a messaging feature that it can go to their app if they wanted to.
Yeah, but they still have this, there's no app support, it's your turn, it has to go to their computer now. Or they would switch, they would not use the app, they would use a different communication, that's what I'm saying.
The communication also goes to their email. Through parentsware, not just the app.
Okay, so through parents, so the coach would use parentsware. Because it changes, like I know practices change all the time. The practice was be at four o'clock, it's at four thirty, practice at the high school now, it's at French University, it happens all the time.
They change that and they'll change coaching and texting and they'll say like. Oh, eleven thirty eight.
I know, I'm.
Green bullet point, like we don't have to go around that whole, that is a very good point to put on your list as administration.
Just know, purpose of that administrative meeting is to do the operational work.
Right.
We're going to have all of our administrators, including our director of athletics. In that room, once the policy is adopted, to do the job that we uh have to do to carry out the policy.
And I think there's things we don't know yet and it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna come out. Um, it's gonna be a, I think we may need to add a second announcement that the high school now, like there's gonna be things that are gonna have to adjust and change. Um, but I know, I talk to a lot of kids, I know that this is, the concerns they have are not like, I need to check Snapchat all day. Their concerns are literally about the communication between each other, their teachers, because their teachers email them. Or they email them, but they're on, they have their phone to check their email, they're not on their Chromebooks all day. I need you to come take this test this period, right, so these are real things that come up during the day that we have to.
Right, that's like unhealthy, right?
But it is, but this is what, yeah, how in high schools there.
Also by the ban is.
Embrace the change, right, everything is gonna be challenging in the beginning. But we're gonna find a way because they have proven things that show that this helps children and in the end. That's what your, you know, ban is there to do, right, and help them to reach out to their school and their curriculum and everything else that they're supposed to learn, so I think. Yeah, we have to look at this as like a starting point, it will change over time, absolutely, I'm sure there's gonna be things that come up and arise as we go. And.
Overall, it's a very positive.
And please, no, we are not starting this from a deficit model as an administrator team. We know that our students, that's why I say, oh, we're in. There's gonna be a word for this, the policy that we'll see may not be, tonight may not be a policy here. We are not approaching this from a deficit model where Chloe comes on Thursday of school. We are not approaching this from a deficit model, where Chloe comes on Thursday of school, and she has the device that's not allowed. We are not going to, the directive is to help Chloe understand this change, it's not to uh come at her from a deficit model. Right, cause we're going to have to help our teachers, our principals, they're changing legislation. They're changing interpretation of legislation daily as, as we can see here. The day after, we had our first reading of the policy, the state sent out a funding letter. So things are going to continue and change, so that's, we, and as school districts, we while change can be an iceberg or a flood, most of education is an iceberg, it, you know, it affects change on the landscape, but it takes a little bit longer. We are often used to flood changes as well, those are quick, and we can be adapted to the thoughts. We will, we will keep you updated, we will work with our students, we will work with our staff, and we will work through each of these, these items as they.
Can I get a motion to approve policy five, six, nine, five, submit new subject, enable devices during this whole day? Second, all in favor?
So next, uh next steps. So now we will uh begin to engage our administrators based around the policy language, to look at our practices and protocols. We also must report to the state our policy, the state will review the policy. And if they give it the state approval, they will release funding and let us know. And we also need to begin identifying data on any violations of the policy that would require um disciplinary referrals or confiscation of devices. That's the immediate um next steps.
Um, can I make a motion to revise the agenda to add cabinet updates? Sure, second, all in favor?
Uh, thank you, board, I uh ended my superintendent's report, which uh we'd be remiss if we didn't allow our cabinet members to provide their updates.
You're welcome.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Stephen Garcia, our assistant superintendent for community resources and leadership, though, if he has any updates. And it's a busy time of year, and our cabinet may have a bridge updates, just to.
But yeah, you know, my updates are usually pretty personnel-oriented, for obvious reasons, but um so we do have uh a number of teachers who've been appointed uh tonight, which I, I think is um a testament to a few things, obviously, we had a retirement council. Um, we had uh some teachers who, who have moved on to other careers, but also just we have one who's relocating and said that, um, for them to leave the district. But um whenever we have the opportunity to hire any new staff, i- it's, it's a golden experience. You have the opportunity to find the next generation of teachers that will work with our kids. Um, and I just wanna say that uh in this year, I think the search for these uh teachers, which Mike and I have all interviewed, that's our final interview. And uh, and also, also Lauren, um, they've been really uh impressive. So I, I just wanna say that the the time and effort that's being put into searching for the best was highly qualified candidates, um, is evident. In this, I think Lauren, also Chris, and Beneath it for all the directors and also administrative team, the principals. But I, I've just, just seen a stark difference in, in our approach and our partnership, and making sure we have the best faculty staff. So, um, I, I have been very impressed with the teachers that we've been attracting and the ones that were hired.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, I will echo that, so thank you to all the hard work, as we often say, one of the most important things we can do, other than the safety and security of our students, our staff, by those students with the highest caliber uh staff to be uh exposed to and to support that staff and to maintain that staff. Uh, on a related note, I do want, this is a new board constitution, um, and I want to connect, it's almost budget season, leader or not. Jill, don't say it. It's not, it's not the line by the way, but, but I do want to remind the board of the commitment that I made in public, um, regarding, um a, 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 a section of our instructional staff that we will be looking at this year to make sure we are um using our resources in the most effective way to support our students. Um, we did mention that we are looking at the uh teaching assistants, the role of the teaching assistants, particularly those who are not assigned to mandated services, and how we can best utilize that role. With any position, as it becomes open, we take a look to see if we do need to replace that position, that is just good beneficiary um actions. Um, we did commit to the, the community, uh, or I did commit to the board and the community that um we need to take a look at our, our teaching assistance uh philosophy, how we view the supports the teaching assistants provide. We have been in contact with the leadership of the teaching assistance unit, TAMA. Um, to make sure that they are part of that process, so they understand what we're thinking, and we value their insights. But as uh we've had a number of, of instances since the budget has passed, where we've had to revisit if a teaching assistant has decided to move on from the district for whatever reason, if that position is still viable, we've worked with building leaders um as well to, to make sure that we do that efficiently. So that work is ongoing and will continue to be ongoing, but I just wanted to make a connection from our budget season. Now that we're almost in the next budget cycle, uh, to, to that, so. I'll turn it now over to Ms. Jill Pigrilla, our assistant to the superintendent for financial continuity and controls.
Good evening, um, okay, so, I mean, the business office is off and running, getting ready for its, again, annual audit, which is starting on August eleventh. Um, you know, we'll have a full audit here, a team here that whole week. Um, we are welcoming Kim Parks, our new treasurer, who started um last Monday, um, August, uh, July fourteenth. Uh, she hit the ground running, she's getting herself acclimated to our new systems, um, getting to know everybody in our, in our building, and um, seems to be uh fitting in perfectly with everyone. Uh, she's gonna be a great asset to the team, from what I can tell. Um, uh, we are also, um, of course, this past couple of weeks, taking um very seriously the impact of the National School Lunch Program and bringing it into the district, and what does that mean for us? And as far as um revisiting the contract and preparing documents for the consultant who'll be preparing that bid, those bid specs. Um, so a lot of, a lot of time has gone into um making those decisions and, and how they're gonna affect the school. Um, we also, um, talked about, and I think it's, it may be on um this evening's um agenda as well, the liability reserve. Um, so I'm just talk a minute or two about that. Um, we're developed, we're implementing, or would like to establish that reserve, um, because we have a number of settled cases. Um, uh, whether they're um special education cases or just student um cases, legal cases that have been settled, that we know we have a liability for. We can't put money in there beyond um the amount that we currently owe, so if we're obligated to pay a certain amount uh out in this upcoming school year, that's the amount that we're allowed to put into that reserve. Um, we have not budgeted for those um settlement cases this year when we did the budget. Um, so at the end of this year, when we, uh, because some of them were unsettled at the time, so now that we know what those, that cost us. Um, now that we know how much money we're probably gonna have remaining at the end of the school year, we know that we'll be able to fund that reserve in order to pay out those settlements. Um, so that's what that's all about, so we'll be um establishing that, and then when the audit is over, we'll um we'll fund that reserve with the money if we can. And that's the only updates I have, if anybody has any questions for me, that we've been working on.
Thank you, Ms. Pigrilla, I will now turn over to Chief Minister Chris Perrin, our acting director for pupil personnel services. I'm sorry, Greg, if you please, moving my record.
Thank you, uh, happy to report that we actually have exceeded our indicator and rental surveys requirement, we're at a hundred and three percent. And I'm still going to continue to encourage families to send those in, please, um, as we are gonna use that information to help inform our practices. Uh, in addition to that, we have received a number of initial referrals to both five and four and C S E committees. Um, so we're scheduling those meetings over the summer, uh, to have all those done, the evaluations. Uh, and then I'm also very excited to announce that we are working towards a partnership with Northwell Health, that would uh allow us to offer um more uh readily available psychiatric, psychological, uh, behavioral, mental health to our families here in Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. I'd ask Ms. Beneath Joy to provide her update as our executive director for technology and innovation. It's a very slow time of technology during the summer.
Extremely, so I will pick and choose what I wanna actually report on. I know facilities request is one of the hot topics from last year. Um, to automate the facilities request, where people can put in um request for a, like, for example, the cafeteria, it goes through the right channels to get approved. And then notify the person who's actually made the request, so that is in effect at this time. So if you go to our district website, um, under departments, operations, maintenance and safety, there's a facilities request. So I did draft a page that talks about if you are outside organization like time Portland, you have to register for an account first, so when they, there's um uh application they have to submit with their insurance information, it goes to our facilities department, Kathy and Tracy. Um, and the department receives those requests, they will approve it, once it's approved, they'll can create an account and request a um facilities that's available in the buildings. So, yesterday, we actually held the first training with our um secretaries in the building, cause they're the first ones who would get that request. Um, so Kathy and Tracy organized that meeting. We had um almost everybody from the building, at least one secretary from each building that attended the training, so um, I did ask them to put in a fake request, so we know it's going through the right channels. So far, we do see things coming through the system. Um, so that is in place. Um, if you have any questions, there is a little video that I posted there, and I have to do it, so, kind of, it's pretty self-sustentory, but there is a video there, if anyone have any questions. So that's in place, the other exciting part of my job is the cybersecurity audits that I've been going through. So we just finished three more controls, which were the basically what they go through is how we manage, how we maintain different parts of technology. Um, our malware data recovery and network infrastructure management was um the topic for this month. Um, at the end of this, I'm supposed to get a scorecard um to see like where we are with this in this framework. I've been warning the um, the Rockley Smith, I, I have the person who is doing the interview with me, I do have, he was the same guy that I did the interview in my previous district as well, so he knows me pretty well. I've been telling him we're going through a transition, so things are like literally changing day by day. So things I'm giving him an answer at the beginning of the audit has changed. So when we get the scorecard, I can probably tell you think that has been changed and why that scorecard is where it is.
It's like golf or basketball, lower score.
Higher score the better.
Alright.
So, um, the other is my, uh, our data team is very busy doing end of year reporting. I know they are working very closely with uh special education department, because we have a lot of deadlines and when things have to be done. Um, also getting um systems ready, like tomorrow, we're actually working on neutral kits rollover, so getting systems ready for the beginning of the school year. Um, what else? So I, I spoke a little bit about the managed IT, we are currently on this has been pushed out by two weeks now, August fifteenth is our cut over to the lyric for IT management. Um, we did cut over two weeks ago for service help desk, I did send out an email to the district, basically saying any uh level one type of request can go through service desk. Before, we never had a phone, that they can just pick up the phone and call, uh, you always have to submit a help desk. Now you can actually call the service desk member, and there is a live person Monday through Friday, five to uh seven to five o'clock. Will answer that phone call too, like, if it is, um, locked out of the system, for example. Um, they can be assisted right away.
I think I was one of the first attempted users of that help desk, and I dropped my uh laptop. They made, they made, they banned me from having the device.
Superintendent always get excused. Um, so one of the changes that we did make in the parent portal is um the transportation, so in the past, uh, the previous years, when we do release the transportation information, it's just one tab that says transportation information, it's the students from and to home and school. So that's the only information we were available and was able to display in parent, parent portal. Um, because we do have students who go to daycare, we were always giving that information by phone or sending an email one by one, but, um, or putting in a letter into the back. So we were able to finish coding on alternate transportation. So there's transportation information and then alternate transportation information in infinite canvas, so if you do have an alternate location that you are you have a bus, um, like you're going to the daycare, not that, you know, from home and school. Um, that information will be now available in infinite canvas when we do launch, um um, in August with the schedules and things like that.
August twenty fifth.
August twenty fifth, there's two different dates, there's one for the high school, and it's
Transportation.
Oh, rest of the day, even weekend, thank you, update, yes. Um, and the annual forms, like, already, Mr. Mr. Parker, we already said that in his update, but do be on, starting August first, we're going to be sending out reminder emails, they will annoy you if you did not complete it. It will be a daily reminder, asking you to complete the annual forms. And the parents have to do it, what we noticed in the past is, parents are not logging into their parent portal. They're asking the students to log into the parent portal to get the schedules. Student parent portal will not be open until the last weekend. So when we post, like, for example, the schedules for the high school, it's, I believe, August fifteenth. If parents did not complete that, they will not get student schedules until student portal later opens up on that weekend, before school starts. So ask your parents to complete the parent request, and then complete the form, and they'll have access to the parent portal.
So if I'm a student who goes on August twenty fifth to find my schedule, and my parent has not completed the required information, the required uh signatures, will I see my schedule as a student?
So students, we do allow them, because there's no way to like, kind of, stop them, that weekend. Right, it won't be the twenty fifth, they will be like that weekend before the Labor Day weekend. They'll have the portal available, I know the students want their schedules as soon as possible, I know they're gonna ask their parents to complete their parent portal forms, so it's just a simple logging in and just accepting all those, um uh required documents, saying like, yes, I agree with the code of conduct, yes, I agree with that computer policy. So that's basically the annual form we're required to get, so.
Thank you, Ms. Joy.
Thank you.
We'll round out our cabinet report with our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment, this Lauren's calls.
Thank you, um, I'll echo what Dr. Garcia said, um, the last few weeks have been fast and furious with hires and some incredible teachers that I'm excited to bring into the district. I wanna take a minute and thank our community, um, even though it's summer, we've been inviting students in to complete demo lessons with our, uh, with our candidates so that we have a sense of how they uh perform in front of our students. Um, so principals and I have been reaching out to families and have gotten great responses from families to drop their kids off, whether it's before camp just for half an hour for a lesson, so we truly appreciate um their partnership, as well as parents have been invited to attend some of these and the stakeholder meetings, so that they have an opportunity to meet some of our candidates along the process, so um, that's been exciting and a lot of um great names on our agenda today. Um, as a part of my entry plan, I have a letter that will be shared with the community shortly, uh, hopefully at the end of this week, uh, about a bunch of four meet and greet opportunities, um, there will be three in-person and one virtual. Um, they're varied in days and times, um, in community locations, at the waterfront, at the Blue Pig, um, and two of those. I will also have Spanish language interpreters, so that, um, we can invite the entire community to engage. Um, and I'll be inviting all my friends from the cabinet as well, whoever wants to attend, if you're family, it's always welcome to attend. Um, the last thing I wanted to share today is that, um, as we know, we have our AP into reading program, our H M H into reading, um, version three this year, um, and I'll be presenting about, um, how that will went last year and the data and what we've learned in September. Um, version three this year, um, and I'll be presenting about, um, how that rollout went last year and the data that we've learned in September. Um, but as, um, the new version was, uh, rolled out this summer, one of our teachers who was heavily involved in the pilot, as well as the committee around this work. Um, Ms. Danielle Cohen, um, was selected, uh, as a teacher contributor for HMH Into Reading. Um, the resources that she's created for her students in her class are being recognized and published, uh, on the teacher's corner, so. She's taking and, um, editing and working and training other teachers and her colleagues, and then. Uh, teachers across the country in, um, some best practices for this. Uh, I have invited her to the September meeting, so that she can share, uh, so we can celebrate in this Cohen. Um, as well as she can share, um, some of the tips and tools and best practices that she's learned along the way, uh, with the larger community, so. Um, it's exciting to know that, um, you know, I joined, uh, the Facebook page for HMH Into Reading, cause that's what you do as a teacher, you. You know, join Facebook, see what other teachers are doing, um, and Danielle is all over there, ask, people are asking her questions, and I'm, I didn't realize as I'm reading through all of this. It's actually our Danielle Cohen, um, so it's very exciting, and I applaud her and afford to celebrate her in September.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and so I'll turn it back over to, to you, uh, Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, sorry, as you can see, that the cabinet updates are much more interesting than the script update, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session, I'd like to ask a motion to move to executive session. Motion to move to executive session, all in favor? The Hendrick Hudson School District Board of Education will convene for the purpose of collective negotiations on medical law. Medical, financial, credit, or the history of a particular personal corporation, or matters leading to the appointment or employment history of a particular personal corporation. Or matters leading to the appointment or employment or commotion or demotion or discipline or suspension, or removal of particular personal populations.